Title two, or title five. If there is anyone that's interested in maybe serving on our planning committee, we are getting ready to dive into our ESA grant writing next week. It's very, very exciting. So by law, we have to ask for public input. So if there's anybody that's interested in being, you know, on this committee or being, you know, on this planning team, it is important that, you know, they do get input in how this money is being spent. It's to serve all students. We are a school-wide Title I school, which means that all of our students are considered Title I students and all of our staff are considered Title I staff. So, you know, the state wants to know how we're spending that money. So this is, you know, important work. In addition to that, we are also in the process of writing our ESER 3, which is better known as the, or it sort of falls under the American Rescue Plan Act. There are, you know, percentage, you know, there's a percentage of things that we have to do with this money. We're looking at about $410,000. And one of the requirements for this, you know, for spending this money or creating the plan is that we needed to ask for parents and staff input. We sent out a survey just recently, asking for parents and staff to sort of chime in on what, you know, changes they'd like to see in our school, around instruction, closing the gap, you know, curriculum. And we had a lot of, you know, parents report back that they really would like to do some more, have us to do some more expenditure, what kinds of learning, use our outdoors more as a learning venue. And so that, you know, that is, that is something that we are in the process of trying to get started with our outdoor classroom and some, you know, some other, some other things. So it was, we got really, really good, meaningful feedback and we'll take that with us when we lead our application.
Georgia, is that, is that part of the second wave of federal funding?
It's the third.
It's the third wave.
Yeah.
But this is the last Biden package. And what are the restrictions on that?
Well, it says that we have to spend 5% total to address learning gaps.
Okay.
1% for after-school activities and 1% for summer learning. And that's just very generalized right now. It's much more detailed once we get into the application. I haven't yet exceeded yet, but that's my understanding. And it's leased in phases. So there'll be like a phase one, you can only do this with this phase. And then there'll be a phase two and that can be spent on these kinds of things. But we have been talking a lot about, you know, some of these things, you know, for example, a after-school program for K to 2 possibly next year. It's going to be part of the plan. Summer learning is always part of our plan. And then, you know, you know, a big focus for us over the summer is going to be looking at how to sort of address learning loss.
So this sounds like it's more curricularly focused than it is COVID-focused.
It still needs to be COVID-related, but, but you're right. They want their, it's more, you know, definitely more curriculum-based or instructional, you know, not so much facility-driven kind of stuff. Yeah, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Seth.
That's something I'm saying, I'm excited to move into my new role. Moved into my office, we cut another door for me in the building. A lot of doors, but.
You did a door this time?
Yeah, so when I, when I, I got the position that a lot of the staff were wanting me to stay where I was, because I had a door in the hallway. The old principal's office, I had to go through this main office to get there. So we cut a door and from the door, I can see all the way down the hall. It's going to be really nice, so hopefully as much as possible. Students, students will stop by and see me, teachers will see me. So just, I'm looking forward to, you know, like the board members that are still here. The board members, last year we went through a walk together. Thought we worked well together, we did hard things. So I'm looking forward to another year, getting back to focusing on real learning, not always crisis management. So the main office, we're getting work on the handbook this week. Kim and I just kind of got our areas set up. We both, it's our first week back, we took a vacation. So we're kind of getting our areas set up, how we're going to have things. We're going to begin working on the handbooks, a few things we want to do in there. I am going to be working on our attendance policy. We're looking at scheduling at the K through 5. The schedule will be pretty much the same, high school, pretty much the same. But we're looking to do some different things in the middle school. For the last years, we've had the same classes every day. And we're looking at maybe doing like a rotating block, things that open up more areas in the schedule instead of having seven periods. We have some ideas, I could have nine, what makes the cycle light, like career prep, our social emotional learning, maybe adding more language special. We have a lot of ideas on the table, we're going to see if it's going to work. We're not going to do a big change and see if it can change, but if it makes a better for the kids, we'll do that. And then like Georgia said, through the survey, the teachers start talking about like interdisciplinary projects, how much French learning, you know, offering a longer block per day will help some of that. With that, the fun day we had in the year, we have been working since then, right? That was a big hit, that was awesome, kids had a good time. It helped the wellness, did an unbelievable job with K through 5. Kids like that kind of will feel outside of school. Yeah, I know I've mentioned a few times the portrait of graduate work. That is going to be a go, I have a meeting tomorrow. We got a call from, tell the kids that facilitate the project. We're not doing the all-in auction where they come facilitate. They're going to kind of tee us up for the meetings and work with us and help us troubleshoot and plan and prep. We have a lot of tools on the website, so a final meeting with them tomorrow. It's like, it kind of hinges on funding, so I don't know where we're going to start, but it'll be about a process, it's community involvement, you know, looking at our vision, coming up with compliments, like what we want a graduate piece here to have accomplishments. I'll have a lot more to mention. So that's kind of what's going on there. I do have a little bit of a, I got a chance to start taking it into our spring assessment data. I have just a quick presentation, like an overview. We'll have more in the fall. We did send out MBE reports because I was working with the Curriculum Leader Association. We were trying to come up with a cover letter to send out. And then somebody said, well, why? Probably should wait to see what the states would send out. Because we don't want to send out a report that we have and then the state sends something else that has different language. We don't know if they're going to pass scores. So I didn't do that. So anyway, so our, our spring, we, uh, data, so just from the beginning, the growth from winter to spring growth was consistent across all grades, had a couple of grades that stayed the same. But overall, we did grow and it was a short window. We, uh, we did winter in March and February, then we did this in May. It was tough, we did this at a tough time of year, especially for the high school kids. Like they were taking the WEA's like the last week of school. We had some kids like check out. So, you know, it was, it wasn't ideal. I think next year if the state continues, which they should, we'll probably do like March to April as well, like the sweet spot, right? When it's good, get nice. So very similar from the spring, like we're beating the norms, especially six up. You know, the elementary level with all, I figured pretty much from March 20 to the end of the year, you know, like mid-winter, some of the kids have like 50% of their time revoked. And at the elementary level, that wasn't ideal. So, you know, we were very close to the norms there, there were two grades. But there was definitely growth. Even so, if you didn't meet the norm in the winter, still may not quite meet it in the spring, but everyone grew because the norms grow, like the winter norms and spring, they go up. I looked at spring 2019 to 2020. We definitely, I think it was hard, you know, what's tough here is like the classes are all so different. That is tough to compare a third grade class in 2019 to a third grade class in 2020. Because when you have 11 kids, it's just, it's crazy how different classes can be. Like for instance, in the juniors, you get one junior class, there's a ton of math petitions in it and they get a 250 average. Next year, all the kids stopped taking math and they get it. So it's hard, but the trend looked like in general, we were a little bit lower this spring, which was expected, that's what I expect to see. But then in some spots, it was higher than in 2019. So it's kind of, that didn't tell me a lot when I looked at that. So this, I put this together real quick this afternoon. So this is just winters to spring at or above the average percentile range. And what we had called is basically from the 41st percentile up, is considered an average or above. So K through 11 math in the winter, we had 69% at or above the average. In the spring, we had 71%. The big victory there was K through 2, 59% 68. The workshop we did in March, their team really focused on math and what they could do. And they, they really did a great job and then they had a really nice, like, I don't know the whole process, but as they did math, they built like Sundays and at the end of the year, they had ice cream sundays to celebrate that growth. And they really, especially like that one, two grades, really, you can see where that targeted piece, picked math and went after it, it really made a huge difference. Then the other grades was bouncing around. High school was, you know, really good in some spots and you could pick out the kids like that were like, yeah, we're not doing this again. K through 11 reading, 67% to 68, you know, percent growth. We grew, you know, you look through and they did grow. And then for language usage, only grades three through 11 do that. We went from 69% to 73% at or above. So, you know, we, we go, we're in-person five days a week from the workshop we did in March, we had some targeted things we were trying and I looked it off, so I was excited about that. And I overall was really happy, it's kind of like I said before, it's exactly what I expected to see. And again, with that, where we did synchronous learning for the older kids, you can see where it worked. So we definitely have work to do this fall. As we come back, I think, look at the data again, revisit some of the goals. We want to get that workshop around data and not just keep moving forward and keep bringing stuff up. And I got a feeling by the end of next year, we'll be right back. Right back where we need to be and do.
Seth, are you going to use any level of targeting, targeted assessment of individual students in terms of placement for curriculum and instruction that you did when kids came back in this past fall?
I believe at the, at the line grade level six through 12, I mean, there, we will be doing our TI response intervention using this data, but they're pretty much going in where they need to be. And there, you know, we were having some honors classes, some non-honors. We're mixing some nine and 10 kids. I know there's plans in the works for especially grades one through three to really do some targeted, you know, groupings. We're even moving the specials, when specials happen, so they gave, we have some staff. So yes, we are going to continue to target. The K5 with, you know, the Title I, the interventionist, it's really, they do an amazing job.
And now you have a literacy and math specialist, so that's, that would be a fantastic role for that, that position.
So that, I was just, I was really happy that we, I don't know when we're going to get the science test, the new science test was, it almost seemed, especially we did it in the fifth grade, I think they were just trying to pilot it. I thought they were going to pull the plug on it because it was still late in the year. Took the kids like 10 minutes to do each section. We'll see what we get. I don't know when we're going to get it, you know, with the old MBAs, we take it March and state will give us stuff, you know, actual data. Yeah, and then this last thing, Sean. So I was going to try to give you handouts, our copy here. You couldn't even read it. So I just want to share, I met with Miss Mommy and this is just some data. You can't see it very well, but whatever your committee is one and two, she really, she does a lot of common assessments that are used across the country, I believe. And this was just a post-assessment, a common lit post-assessment and they had their, some literacy, so they had evidence, central ideas, the themes, interaction of ideas and vocabulary and language. And so this is, our committee is one, freshman. The blue is our student scores on the post-assessment and the dark is all common lit ninth graders that took this. Yeah, so that's our light blue. So our, you know, like she, she is amazing, she pushes, she's very rigorous, she pushes them hard. And she was really excited to share this with me. We looked at, I had to chop it up, there was individual student data and like some kids were like plus 70 points from pre-assessment to post-assessment. So that was our, that's our freshman and just, can you click?
Yeah.
So this, we, with the, with committee's two, with that committee's one, that was, they're all grouped together. This is honors, general, like non-honors. You can see if they were mixed, but look, our honors kids were much higher all across the board. And the other class was right there. It's a little bit lower, but she was really excited to share this with me. You know, she works really hard. Yeah, our kids are, you know, we're doing okay. It's all right, but I just want to share that, I'm sorry, it's kind of really, I photocopied these, it looked so nice. And then your copies, like you couldn't even see the light blue. So I just decided to take pictures with my phone and throw it up here at the last minute. Take it on the fly. So I can, you know, I have a lot of people that people, you know, if you want to come in and talk on a deeper level, anybody from the board, I'd be happy to sit down, I guess. Last time I handed out stuff in the winter, I looked back on what I gave out, that was a lot of stuff. It was almost too much to speak about, so.
I appreciate the thoroughness with which you shared this stuff up to date. I know we've been asking about it and you've been really consistent about sharing that with us. So please, sure.
Sure.
Seth, when you presented that the last time, this was quite a bit, but I did notice in a couple of grades that were not as performing as some of the others. How did that data correlate in spring numbers? Was there some recovery there?
There was, especially when I stepped math, like the, that K.
Yeah, I just remember you had it broken down by grades. So I just didn't know, plucked together, it's still correlated.
It looked almost the same, really, when you looked at like meeting the norm or not. Like everybody moved up, but the up in some grades didn't quite, you know, I mean, they would have had to jump so far to move more or less out of bounds.
Well, I'm just saying that everyone consistently had some growth, but are we still showing?
We're still, yeah, we're still working towards that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was the third or fourth grade that's up.
Pretty much K, well, not the K wasn't really effective, but yeah, pretty much one through five are not, we're going to do a little bit of work to test it out for.
So and that's where you need staff working on action.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And then what was really exciting, just noticed like two months of the focus with math.
Yeah, that's, that's great for 59 to 68.
That's a lot of growth.
Well, and I think public expects, I know Ash's or number expects, you know, things happen and we have to identify and determine issues. It's the important thing is what's the next step in making those adjustments? And it's great when you see progress because I mean, obviously you just solved that, that the issue and don't, so kudos to that.
I can't get a, I don't have the number, but one class went from like a one, 178 rate to like a 188.
That's a pretty big jump for like three months.
Three months, good. Yeah.
All right, well, I just, that wasn't in your report, I know you had more breakdown. I'd rather, I'm tapping like seven.
Thank you, Seth, that question. Well, Georgia.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing that I need to announce, and it's an important one. Because McGalloway has pulled out of our district, our board has been reduced to 11 members, which changes their reconfiguration of our forum number. So our attorney reached out and gave us that reconfiguration number, which is now 978. But in addition to that, we have to do what's called a reapportionment plan. And I have been sort of researching and looking into this all day.
We've done it before.
So I, and I was looking at a copy of our plan the last time.
It was during Jay's, Jay's tenure. We needed a reapportionment, I remember doing that.
Okay, well, maybe Chris, you can help with that.
Yeah.
Because we do need to do that and I'll keep you posted. And basically, really, I think all that means is, you know, will the number of votes for each board member change? And we just need to make sure that that gets validated by our commissioner.
I guess scary than education, I think, is really now.
Yeah.
Does everybody understand what weighted voting is? And the fact that all of us sitting around the table don't have the same say as other members, rangeling having the largest population, those members have the largest vote. And then proportionately, predicated on your population, your vote is fractionized by that. So it's just a reapportion of that, right?
Yes, it is. And it, and one, you know, one thing that's also important to note is that a forum is a minimum of 500 points out of the 978, okay? And at least, and it has to be, and at least six members present.
Oh, okay.
So Lea, if you want to look at that, can we lost one, at least, so it stays six. Pretty much it's always better. Okay. It's pretty much if we have three, three rangelings, rangeling board members would usually can.
Have a board.
Have a board.
Yep.
And it's only going to increase with McGalloway, everybody's going to get.
Get a few more points.
A few more points.
Yep.
One thing I did want to bring up, I want to housekeep if I could, uh, Chip.
Sure.
Is I want to make sure that all our new members, welcome, have gone to their town courts and got properly sworn in. It's okay if you didn't tonight, but legally, if we have to pick an action item, you can technically vote, otherwise it will affect us on that part. So.
Is that an issue for anyone who's had the.
I know Joanna told you she already.
Well, no, that's okay.
Okay.
So I just go to listen.
You got to listen, get sworn in. So, so just for the record for tonight, I'm not trying to be mean, just that's the rule. So I just want to make sure that we're covered there because that could affect us on if we've got an action item tonight. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Appreciate you bringing that up, Chris, thank you very much.
And I don't think Deb, you have to redo it because you were already.
I actually, she actually. Go back in and do it again.
Oh, super.
All set.
Okay.
So I think it's just.
Moving on then to committee reports. Let's begin with Kathy in the policy committee.
Well, we didn't have a policy meeting until I, it was, was, would have been yesterday and we wouldn't have been able to get everything ready for today. So we're putting it off. I'd like to put it off just to the last Wednesday in July. Everybody can make that, the committee can make it. So I'll send out an email and.
Yes, I'm Sean.
Now I know who you are.
Yeah.
So it will be most likely the last Wednesday in July.
Which is the 28th.
28th, so I'll, but I'll send out an email to remind you to, you know, I have, I mentioned we're all put together like.
Is it 2 o'clock Kathy or 2:30?
We can go to 2:30, which is better.
I mean, we, I, we can go at 2.
2.
Right?
So it was during the school year that it was 2:30.
It's difficult during the school year, during the summer.
Okay, so I'll go to 2 and so I, I'm off this.
Okay.
But we'll do it through July anyway, you know, on the side.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. And I think it's fair to say you've gotten all the way through all of them, right now? And so now we're starting at the beginning again?
Kind of, but then I have people like Sean, who brings up policy that he's interested in and things that he can improve on. And so that will be it on this, that happens all the time. So I'm not.
But I'm not the only one.
But then.
Yeah.
But just, you know, and I think there were a couple that were at the table that were, we'll be starting back in days and go write the book again. And just try, we have to try and keep everything at the minimum of three years. Or the maximum of three years, actually. We have, so now the whole book is a, is a maximum of three years. So anything that was, is three years old now, we must all hope to get this year.
And Kathy, just, just a quick question for you. I remember that in our board workshop, one of the things that Steve Bailey mentioned to us was that we should have an ethics policy for the board. Have we addressed that?
Yes, I believe it's in here somewhere.
Okay, so we adopted that the last meeting, okay.
We adopted it, um.
In January.
January.
Oh, January, okay.
Well, I must have.
We might have, not at the meeting then.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't go to ethics, we cleaned up like three or four policies.
Yeah, great.
Conflict of interest, everyone should read those over.
Absolutely. And I, they have a signature thing on board of ethics.
At each policy.
That, you know, I've never been at, well, we've never had this before. So I presume we should each sign, assign a given to. So.
So homework, what's the number on that policy again? So if everybody could come prepared to, it's posted, all the policies are posted on our website and all you have to do is click on it and print it and then sign it and date it.
It should be one in the files.
Yes, one in the file.
Okay.
Yeah. There was one in the files, I understand.
Great.
Yeah, okay. I think you should have all the policies pertaining to board.
Yes, they're all in here, I guess.
Yep.
Wendy, I didn't have any.
Okay, great, thank you, Kathy. Yeah, it is. Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, I, to that, to that end, one of the things that I was going to suggest would be that it would be helpful, because we do have three new members, to have a board workshop sometime toward the end of the summer, where we can again review the role and responsibility of board members. It doesn't have to be a lengthy session. I think our last one we did on Zoom with Steve was only a couple hours in length. But it's just really helpful to remind people of what their role is, how do you deal with an issue if a community member approaches you and you're a member of the board? What are your next steps in terms of how you, how you handle that? And just general notion about what, what the board's responsibilities are. And I think that's very helpful to new members. So if you're in agreement with that, I, well, Georgia and I could try to schedule something with Steve and we'll send out a survey monkey or something so we can find out what's the best date and time that will work for everyone. Does that seem agreeable? I'm seeing head shaking, so, okay. All right, finance committee.
Yeah, there's been.
No meeting for the.
We have an update, love.
Okay.
Ginny sent one.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, she wanted Jeff to give the update, but Jeff.
I got it here. Ginny provided this update, so I'm just going to read what she provided. She said, "From Jeff, the summer work, cleaning classrooms, moving some classrooms, changing offices for Seth and Georgia, dividing the Title I classroom, painting is needed. Fishing, painting, the baseball wall. The outdoor classroom playground project. Because grants for outdoor studies do not support structures, she, Nene, Chris Farmer are doing local fundraising for the outdoor classroom structure. It's gotten well. She has an amount of $10,000, we raised more than that at this point." And.
Great.
"We're also talking with builder supply about what options we could do to economize the piece of it versus the other pieces. Nene is working on the construction and student learning from the building, from the freight construction. I'd like to try to get the site work done soon and later. We have staff here who just need to get chainsaw and gravel. Emergency address is almost complete except for the paving. The bus did a test drive down. This is true because Jeff sent me the video. I also personally blocked it. A little bit of work needs to be done towards the Alex Street side, but I think that's safe because of what they've got left to do on that ribbon. So it's a little soft right there, but I'm sure that we'll be ready for fall. Well-packed, the survey was done, we clearly have everything marked, everything. We did the legal research and all that. Our address is 100% on property, which the school owns. So there's no question there. Both the butters seemed happy with it, one of the butters actually did the work, so it's not a big issue there. And I think, I think it's success and we met the timeline so that we can get it in under the June 30 windows. It was a great effort by everybody.
Personally, thank you for that because I know several people have shared with me that that would not have been expedited in the fashion that it was had you not been involved in that.
Well, it's nice to have friends in the survey world. So, yeah, it's my pleasure. I think it's important for us to have it and, you know, as we go forward and be able to use the area there, it'll be nice. But even this gravel is, it's solid. You can ride your bike up it and walk it. And it's, it looks nice. And I think all the lights are properly working. If not, we got, I think we got one or two that need to be touched up so that it'd be a good walking loop. I think there were some people walking loop when I was coming in. So anyways, that's it on that piece. Long range planning, going back over the Taylor report for those of you who aren't familiar. Before we started the whole building project, we put in R and P out. We ended up hiring this company, Taylor, a company that came in and basically assessed the entire building, top to bottom, all systems. We thought that was important before we tried to go forward so we knew where we were at. There were several punch items that were minor things that I think maintenance is taking care of. Basically, we're screening that against that piece. That was done so far back, it was done before we did the heating system upgrade. Which was, as you know, over a million dollars in that part. But that's where we discovered some real challenges. Still got some issues to deal with. As you know, with a commercial building such as this, 40,000 square feet, number one concern always is going to be water intrusion, whether through walls, floors, those type of things. Those lead to other issues, which we don't want to have. So again, I know because of open close thing, even though the attorneys didn't do what we asked with the articles, we weren't able to add that 50,000 that we voted on had to be adjusted back down. I really would like over this next year with facilities to map out a solid capital plan. This building to replace it, probably in this day and age with materials, 25, 30 million if not more. And we don't even have 1% of that set aside.
So that's something we clearly get really.
Well, we need to figure it out because I know the community was really upset that we had to take the money out to fix it last time. Borrow the money. Everyone is upset we need to pay interest. I know especially at a couple of the plantations, I had people getting my face pretty mad about it. And I said, well, where were you in 1974 when you should have put $100,000 a year away? So you could have written the check.
We could clearly.
And so. Right. And so that's my concern is that I think we need to know long-term planning is to figure out how we have good capital reserves.
Thank you. The negotiating committee, we met again on June 18. We had a very productive session. We essentially framed it by saying, we're going to be here until we settle this contract. And they, they conquered, we conquered, I think, overall, the atmosphere and the feel of the groups were that everybody gave something, everybody gained something. It was really a positive experience. They have taken the mocked up version of their, their copy to their union for a vote. We had to check with Draven and Woodson because we weren't sure whether we needed to present a clean copy or a mocked up copy. But the mocked up copy clearly identified those areas where changes had been made in the contract. As a result of that, Anne and Liz will get back to us. And we'll clean up the final copy, bring that to the board in August. We will take it to executive session so that we can discuss with you where changes have been made. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions and then we'll vote on that acceptance of that contract by the whole, as a whole. Any questions about that? T. Lea, your report?
Yeah, I'm. I already did.
You think that could probably.
That'll probably go away when you just put on because it's been on there for a year. It'll go away.
All right. Are there any appointments, resignations, nominations or transfers?
Oh, yes, there is. Wrap in.
I take it it's a long list.
So as you notice, there's a new category there that's been put on the agenda and it's kind of around which are transfers.
Yes.
So as of now, our third grade teacher, Brittany DePompo, is moving into the pre-K to eight guidance slash six through eight interventionist position. She has her master's in guidance and she has a teaching degree. So she meets all the credentials to do that. And she's going to be great. Our kindergarten teacher, Bridget Morton, will be moving into that third grade position. Our pre-K teacher, Shelley LaLiberty, is moving back into kindergarten. She is? Yeah. And I am making a nomination or I'm nominating Ashley Ferrara to be our new pre-K teacher for this coming year. This year, she was hired for one year as our four or five teacher. She has a BA degree in early childhood from, from the state university. She's been with us since 2017 as an ed tech in special education and in a pre-K classroom. And do we want to go, do you want me to finish the list before?
Yes, then I think we need to vote on them individually.
Okay. Jeff Hoxley is, I am nominating him as our girls varsity soccer coach this year. And I do have a resignation that actually just came to me about an hour ago. Our fourth grade teacher, Brittany Garcia, is leaving us. She was offered a job in Stratton where she lives, in the community that she lives. And we will miss her terribly, but she wanted to say that I am grateful for my time at RLRS and the connections I've made over the past challenging school years. I feel lucky to have worked professionals in rangelie that continuously put the needs of students first through the challenges presented by COVID-19. Thank you for your understanding and support of this decision. So she's really happy that she doesn't have to make that 16 mile trek back and forth in the winter. So congratulations to her. And that is what I have. I know that was a lot.
So why don't we start back up with the transfers and just go through each one of them and vote on them individually?
Okay. So the first one was Brittany DePompo as pre-K to eight guidance slash six through eight interventionist.
So will Chris second? Okay, Jessica, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Bridget Morton, moving into the third grade position.
Okay, Jessica, second Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Shelley LaLiberty, moving into kindergarten.
Okay, Karen. In a second. Okay, Jessica. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I have nomination of Ashley Ferrara to be the new pre-K teacher.
Hey, Chris, second, Karen. Any discussion? All in favor?
And Jeff Hoxley as the girls varsity soccer coach.
Chris, Karen, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have to vote on a resignation? I don't think so. And we'll be advertising for that position? Okay.
Why are you vacancies?
Just one at this point. Which is. Which is. We'll advertise, we'll advertise for five days in-house.
Okay. Yeah, we have NTEC.
I'm sorry.
We're special education.
We have a special education opening also?
Well, well, I think that's pending numbers right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
After in-house, could I just ask second question? After in-house, because this issue's come up before. Where do we advertise after that, Georgia?
I believe we advertise, I believe they advertise.
Serving schools.
Serving schools, I know for sure.
Okay.
And I'm not sure.
That's statewide.
Yeah, Wendy is actually on Zoom. Maybe she could chime in as far as any.
It's the usual professional channels.
Okay, usual ones, yeah.
Not Facebook.
We, we have. Well, I understand that. It's just that.
I know, no, some people think.
The reason I raise it is.
Some people ask me why the superintendent job wasn't posted.
I understand that. And, and, and in the past, we've had an issue come up that implied that the board did not openly advertise in all of the appropriate publications for positions in the school. So that's the only reason I want to clarify that.
Well, it's, and I agree with you, but it's kind of funny, the same people that wonder why we don't openly advertise don't realize the cost of print advertising and those pieces that come into play that they're all so.
I see.
Sometimes the same people say, why are we spending money on crazy things?
If you're an educator of any quality, if you want a job in state, maybe you can score serving schools.
Serving schools is, it's the LinkedIn of the education.
Exactly.
Mary. Mary. Wendy does say serving schools, Facebook, daily bulldog, irregular, and the higher.
So we, we do also advertise.
It's like all the positions have been on Facebook. I've seen them all.
We are going, we are looking to get more creative with Sheila Raymond's position though and trying to advertise maybe outside of the, you know. Makes sense to do that. So we are looking to.
And Sheila would also like to remind you that there's a position open in finance as well.
Yes, it certainly is.
Orientation of the board, 21, 22 MSMA. I think I brought that item up probably a little bit early. I think that it would be wise for us to have a workshop and I guess I'd like to have some discussion around that item.
I think it's great for new members.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Chris.
I said, I think it's great for new members and it should be option for those of us who have said.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think that if they take this policy on, leave them. And plus sign and bring that. Could have a good power, but they can read these. It does help.
And I think it's very important because really the board, the board's whole role is driven by the policies that we have adopted for the school. So that's essentially our playbook, our bible by, by which we, we respond and, and function as a board. So it's really important that we do that.
Also, they have to take.
Oh, that's right. New board members need to take the.
Freedom of access.
It's a, it's very lax.
Yes.
It's all computerized.
And it is computerized and it's very, very important because it, it articulates what constitutes a board meeting and those kinds of things. And you have to actually sign that and turn that in. So just be aware, that's in the back of your packet.
And how do they, how do they access this?
I'm sorry, what? It's online.
I know, but how?
The address thing.
You just have to read it. It's on the, it's on the Department of Education website.
Yeah. But it doesn't say here.
I'm sorry, Kathy, what?
State freedom of access. State freedom of access website. Okay, so what's the.
What they mean by standard address, that is actually main due.
You just get into the main due and you search freedom of access.
It'll, it'll pop right up.
Google that bad oil, it'll come right up.
Yeah, it will.
It will.
It is just a couple of pages. And then you just have to sign it.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. That's not a requirement.
You know, the school board, everyone has a copy. Do we have any more copies out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have copies of those. We'll, we'll ask when you. Well, I think she has them on G-Top. If not, we'll get some.
All right, new committee assignments. Who's interested in participating on the finance committee? Don't all sign up at once. Who currently is on the finance committee? Karen, you are. And how many members, and, and Jessica, you are. And typically, how many members serve on that committee?
As many as, as the chair wishes.
Do either one of you want to be chair?
I'd like to be moved off.
Actually, you'd like to be moved off, I guess, okay. Is anybody interested in moving on finance? Chris, you are. You want to be chair?
I'll say young. What was that low young? I heard.
I didn't listen. You know, that whole.
There's something.
That whole fun gig issue. Chris, just think of how much fun you're going to have playing in that, in that. Okay. Policy, Kathy, you're going to continue as chair? Okay. And Amber, you'll stay on? Joe, okay. Yes, Joe? Joe? Are you going to be on policy?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, building and facilities. Okay, Jessica, great. Chris was on it.
Jenny.
Jenny was on it. Chris, were you chair of it or was Jenny chair?
Brian was chair.
Would you be willing to be chair of that, Jessica? Okay, put your feet in the water. Amber, you want to be on that committee also? Oh, I thought you said you did.
No, I'll stay on policy.
You'll stay on policy? Okay, so it'll be Jessica and you're sure on that committee, right?
Yeah, I'll stay on. I'll double it.
And, you know, I know that one of the precedents Brian set last year was that he wanted each board member to only be on one committee. So is there anyone here who is not currently on a committee of any kind? Okay, do you have a preference of which committee you'd like to be on?
Are these the committees that are running? Policy, finance, facilities.
Okay, policy and finance?
No, I'm asking, are those the committees?
Yes, these are currently the committees, finance, policy, buildings.
And negotiation, but you already.
We've already done that and I don't think we have a contract coming up next year.
So you're done.
So we're done.
So those are the three. And then whatever the chair decides. So if you'd like to create a committee, feel free to petition the chair.
I think policy.
I'm just saying, it can be done.
I think policy is pretty helpful. So is it? Do either of those.
Facility, July partner, finance.
Okay, put me on finance.
Okay, great. I agree. And anyone else who's not on it?
Head down.
I'm sorry.
Hey, let's put Wes on facilities. He's an electrician, master electrician. He's got a background for that. Go on then.
Okay. All right.
All I told is not here to defend himself.
That's right. That's one of the downsides of not appearing at a meeting. What I'm editing. Okay, the last, next item then is future meetings. And I think that's just to clarify, are we going to continue to meet on the second Thursday of the month at 6:00 in the afternoon? Those meetings will be now will be face to face. Is that an issue for anyone? It's been a.
I personally don't like Thursdays. I think it's tough because especially we have three or four people that are involved with restaurant or tourism and those type of things. And Thursday nights are a tough night.
I'll be working right after you until 11:00 for this.
Okay. So is it.
Well, I think Georgia ought to hype off because we did Thursday for Chris.
That's right, because that was when the day.
It used to be Tuesdays forever.
Okay, okay.
And this time. And the only time we had a conflict was if it was, what we did is the second and fourth Tuesdays because the third Tuesdays often was a selectmen's meeting because the third Monday, if it's a holiday, they, they're right there.
And, and Chris had, had board at the other school on Wednesday.
That's right.
So we agreed.
And he was open here on Thursday.
Yeah. So what does Georgia think?
I, I really don't have a preference. Do you, Seth, have a preference? I really don't. I, I want to make, I want to do what works best for everybody else.
But kind of a strong hold, oh, how many would you prefer Tuesday over Thursday? Almost everybody. Okay, so starting.
Is that work for you though, Madam Chair?
Yes, it does. Doesn't matter. Tuesdays are.
Isn't that vice chair? Can that work for you?
It will. Is.
It will, as long as I play my business league match in the morning.
I was gonna say during the summer, it's probably a challenge.
Very difficult day for us, but by 6:00, everybody's gone.
So are we talking starting in August or are we talking starting in September?
I'd like to start in August because I think that's the maximum benefit, especially for there. We can look at, what would it be, August?
It would be August 10. That's the first time you said? It's the second Tuesday in August. And starting at 6:00, I think that's been traditionally the time we've begun. And meeting here, meeting here at the school. So you can mark your calendars moving forward then, that we're switching to Tuesdays at second Tuesday of each month at 6:00. Yes.
Hi, I was just going to propose or maybe suggest that going forward, maybe we go away from Zoom and go to streaming on YouTube instead.
Go away from Zoom and go
Go away from Zoom and go to streaming these four meetings on YouTube instead. So after the meeting's over, the meeting would still be recorded, but it wouldn't be as cumbersome as a Zoom meeting.
I would figure that, but I would also caveat that I'd like to see a mic better.
Okay.
We can do that. So it's like a mic in each corner or do something that's going to improve audible.
Okay.
Because I think
I will say on Tuesday
Zoom, somebody can chime in and say, hey, I can't hear you.
Oh, right, okay.
Switch the live. We're not gonna have that.
Really bad. I'm having a hard time hearing, so I, you know, we can make it up.
Sure, yeah, that's not a problem.
Even if you just took a sec, let's spend the 100 bucks or whatever and buy a good mic that can look into your camera that can just sit in the middle.
Right.
So that way we can hold that.
But we could also put a mic in the corner of each table too and then for whoever's speaking.
I think it's important that the public be able to hear. I think we also should get that out immediately so that people know that they need to be here if they wish to comment.
Right. And that's gonna go away.
That should go on our social media everywhere as soon as possible. And then again, the day off so that nobody comes back and always they won't. Somebody shows that they know to show.
And I will say too, I think with this type of configuration, we haven't had as many problems with the audio piece for listeners.
Okay.
But I will definitely put my
No, I think it's really improved.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for the suggestion and I, I'm hearing consensus, is that the case? So we're gonna go to live streaming starting in August, no more Zoom.
Right, yeah.
And we'll get the word out so people know that if they want to make public comment, they need to be here. And also board members need to be here. That the Zoom is no longer available for them.
Right, right. And with
I also think we should offer either set up a separate, I don't know who does all the tech these days, but set up a separate email for stuff so that if people have comments or stuff, they can go into this email and then those can get pulled and called and presented by somebody from the staff and those in the public to comment. Because some people aren't the best at coming in and speaking, but they can write what they want and I know that the select board accepts correspondence, written correspondence often. And I think we should encourage all boards of communication, including that.
Sure.
I think historically, we've accepted written comment and and emails, so we'll just continue to do that, but maybe we need to make that more public.
And maybe I'll create a new address for that to go to, like a new avenue.
That would be, I think that would be good so that it goes, they know it's going to the board.
Okay. I think we can do that, right? Okay. But yeah, with the, with the live stream, like Chris was saying, there's not going to be any interaction from the audience and who's watching the live stream.
But the meeting is available.
The meeting is available for them to see, but that's the difference between live streaming and Zoom. Is Zoom, they still could comment virtually, but through the live.
And Sean, will you clean them up afterwards and then post them up to a YouTube channel?
Yeah, yeah, I'll post them to the same channel that I've been posting these to.
I think that'll be great. That would be good to go back to.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item on the agenda is school lunch prices. Georgia?
Um, well, I mean, this is on the agenda because in the past, we've had to mandated that we had to announce the increase in lunch, school lunch prices. This year, there isn't any increase because they're free.
And have we cleaned up any accounts and arrears now so that we're in pretty good shape with respect to that?
Um, I don't have the answer to that right off the bat.
Sheila's on there.
I know historically, that's been a bit of a problem.
Yeah, Sheila, you can unmute yourself for
I actually think
10, if you're listening.
In the past, someone wrote the check.
I'm unmuted, but I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
Is there school lunch balance? In arrears?
No, there are no student, there are no balances that are due.
Right.
That's terrific. Thank you, Sheila. Let's adjourn, but before we do that, just make note that our next meeting is not going to be August the 12th. It's gonna be August the 10th. Since we switched to Tuesday.
Right.
Can I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Hi.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much.